This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And at the conclusion of our Pledge of Allegiance, Alderman Parker has a special presentation in honor of the National Day of Prayer, so please remain standing for them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Since 1952, the US Congress has designated the first Thursday in May as National Day of Prayer. And in honor of that Thursday, which is Thursday, May the 6th, this week, I've asked Reverend Chip Stevens and Reverend Sam Bonner to open our session tonight in prayer. Reverend Stevens?
Goodness, pray. Father, we come before you today and we praise you for the beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for all of the blessings that you bestowed upon our community and upon our nation. And Father, we do want to lift up to you our community as well as our country. Father, we thank you for these Aldermen who are here and for the incredible task that you've given them, for the mayor. Father, I pray that you will guide them even tonight in wisdom as they discuss some of the things regarding our community. Father, we want to pray for our governor, we want to pray for our congress, we want to pray for our president, we want to pray for our national congress. And Lord, we just, we thank you for them and we just pray for them as they make decisions. We want to pray for our troops who are serving overseas and protecting us. We want to pray for their protection on this day. We pray for their families who are left behind. We pray that they know your comfort and your strength and your guidance. Lord, we want to pray for our brothers and sisters in neighboring communities who've gone through some natural disasters lately. We pray for them and their rebuilding efforts, that they will see your guiding hand, that they will know your love. And Lord, again, we thank you so much because you've been so good to us. And with the incredible blessings that you bestowed upon us, we recognize there's responsibility with that. And just pray that you'll help us to handle that responsibility in a manner that pleases you. We do love you and we thank you so much. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all that you have done and all you have done for each and every one of us. And Father, we just pray your blessing now up on the city of Starkville and the Mavericks board. And we just pray that you would bless them and guide them in a way that only you would give the will and have to deal with your family and the city. Father, we just thank you for those that have suffered loss during the hurricane and for all of this. And we just thank you for everything. And Father, we just pray your blessing on each one that are here and Father, that as we govern ourselves now, we observe as the mayor and the board discuss the affairs of the city, we just thank you in advance that you would guide, that you would lead them, not only them, but lead the ones that are here and that are here. And Father, we give our blessing, we give everything to you. It is in the real son of Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Pastor Bonner and Pastor Stevens. All right, you have before you the modified written agenda. Are there any proposed changes to the modified agenda?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
I'm looking for the old, for my old agenda because I hadn't had an opportunity to look at the new one, but I got a few matters I want to pull off, so let me just start with from the old agenda. Let's start on page, page dealing with Roman numeral 10 on the board business. First thing we're going to pull off is item I, L, rather, about the MML. Want to pull that matter off, Mr. Mayor. The next matter will be Roman numeral 11, A, Airport, want to pull that one off. Want to move on over to the Electric Department for the mayor to sign a TV rate change agreement, want to pull that off. Want to go down to Engineering and Streets, want to pull off...
Hold on one second. Ah, okay. All right.
Engineering Streets, want to pull off 3, 4, and 5. And I hadn't looked at the new agenda, item number 8, 6, that was under Personnel, the request from Public Services to, about this salary adjustment, that should be in executive session, is that an executive session? Okay. And I think that's it, Mr. Mayor. I think that's it.
Okay. All right. So that is on page 4, item 10L and item 11A1 off the consent agenda. On page 5, item E2, item F3, and item F4 off the consent agenda. On page 6, item number 5 at the top of the page off the consent agenda, and that's it. Is that correct?
Yes, okay.
Please note, those items have been removed from the consent agenda, only yours did have before you. Are there any other proposed modifications to the written agenda?
I don't, I don't have my staff report, but under Engineering and Streets, F6, that 25-8 does not meet the number in the staff report.
Yeah, that's correct. I forgot to lift that one off, I'm sorry.
So I don't know if we just need to revise that? Not sure if that needs to come off.
I want it off, Mr. Mayor, if he doesn't.
Okay. That's item 6 at the top of page 6 off the consent agenda. Any other proposed modifications?
Yes, although we're going to have a public hearing tonight on the historic preservation ordinance, due to some information I received from the attorney, I need to be able to change a couple of the language, a couple of the sentences in the ordinance. And so what I would ask is that we do still have the public hearing tonight because it's been advertised and there may be people here that want to speak to it, but that we move the actual approval of the ordinance to the next meeting, which would be item X-E.
All right, so the proposed revision from Alderman Corey is to remove item 10E on page 3 from the agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? All right, seeing none, please note the change, item 10E on page 3 has been removed from the agenda. Any other proposed revisions to the agenda? Alderman Carver?
In the section Announcement and Comments, Board of Aldermen comments, in wake of the recent fires, we're going to do the first presentation to the Starkville Fire Department. It'll be recognition to Starkville Fire Department.
Okay, so please note Alderman Carver has proposed revision to his comment under item number 5 to be changed to recognition of the Starkville Fire Department. Is there any objection to that proposed revision? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none. All right, are there any other proposed revisions? Any further proposed revision? Any further proposed revision? All right, seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised would be in order.
Some is.
Motion has been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. All right, you have your modified consent agenda before you. Any objection to the consent agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next item you have before you is the February 16, 2010 minutes. Discussion.
City Clerk, did you prepare these?
Uh, yes, I did.
So everything is in order and meet all of our matters and things and everything legally okay?
It is.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor, based on the city clerk's representation.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve the minutes of the City Historical Board of Aldermen recess meeting of February 16, 2010, based on the city clerk's...
Representation.
Based on the city clerk's representation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. Our next matter before you is the March 16 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
City Clerk, the same inquiry, you answered, it's the same as the previous inquiries?
I did not prepare these, but I did review them.
So you recommended approval by the board?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor, based upon the city clerk's representation, I move approval of these minutes.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve the minutes of the City Starkville Board of Aldermen recess meeting of March 16, 2010, based on the representation of the city clerk. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. All right. We'll now move to comments by the mayor and the board. And I have one comment that I previously made, although there is an addition to it this evening, and that is that there will be power outages because the Electric Department is going to be replacing transformers that will occur over the next three months. The first of those is scheduled to occur tomorrow, May 5. In order to cause the most minimum disruption possible, the Electric Department will be doing this work in the wee hours of the morning, from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. Different areas of the city will be affected in different ways. The longest power outages experienced will be in the southwest portion of the city. Areas in southwest portion of the city could experience up to two hours from 3:00 to 5:00 in power outage. Then the southeast portion of the city will experience less of a duration, probably not the full hour, full two hours. Finally, North Starkville will experience only minor disruption in power. And that is on May 5, 1, and then additionally, it will happen again on June 5. Finally, it will happen two more times, on July 10 and August 7, 2010. All right, Alderman Carver?
First of all, in response to that, what preparations have been made for like special needs individuals or anybody of any kind of medical condition that requires electronic service? Anything? I mean...
Mr. Hathaway?
We provide to advertise and go by everybody that we knew, we have a list and inform them of it. We've been to all the different factories and big stores and we've also provided to the newspaper to have it also advertised.
Any further discussion on that topic? All right, seeing none, we'll move to comments by the members of the board. Alderman Carver?
We felt that the mayor and the board, that it was symbolic of the first Employee of the Month recognition of this board being to the Starkville Fire Department due to the fact of what they've handled and logistically and responsibleized over the last four or five months. So if you would, Roger, or Chief Lynn, come up and give us to you. And it just, it basically says, sincere appreciation with mayor, board, and Alderman, all of your career service and all the outstanding contributions to the department. And those who took the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would be aired if I didn't recognize that we had a lot of help in this with the police department, electric department, and water department. It was truly a team effort along with some of the county that assisted us and only half of 60 firefighters who were truly going to be honored at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment may do so and be recognized for a maximum of three minutes by coming forward, and please state your name for the record at the outset.
Greetings to the mayor and board. My name's Alvin Turner, Ward 7. To the wise man, Sisfront, and Alderman Vaughn. The concerns of citizens are getting very specific. The citizens, they do not understand why the Carver ditch situation that the NAACP hadn't found a quiet outcome. The people are suffering like they're suffering. Now, if they get in contact with the NAACP, we will have to bet. No one wants blood on their hands or something that could be avoided. We don't want no child or no adder to get snake bitten. They're crawling. We do not want no one to fall in that ditch where it be a child or adder. And we have a responsibility to citizens, and we should let them know that we appreciate and we care. The traffic lights on Main Street and Family Dollar store and grocery, the citizens say that they hold real long and they don't understand they might need to be checked. The church signs and stuff, the church is supposed to be a safe place for, if we're going to attack the church, that make people wonder what we really are. Those are some concerns for citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Jordan, and I stand in support of Lee E. Brand Jr. for the appointment to the Board of Education. I would like to begin by reading a letter that was submitted by several area pastors for his support, and it reads, "We, a group of concerned ministers with members in the Starkville City Schools, have drafted this letter to voice our support for Lee E. Brand Jr. being appointed to the Board of Education. We encourage you to make Mr. Brand an appointee because we hold the collective conviction that he is qualified, compassionate, and insightful enough to assist the board in moving our city's educational system forward. As well, Lee is connected well enough in the community to know and express the interest of the citizenship. He is as qualified as anyone, and Mr. Brand will promote the betterment of our district, our children, and our community. With this desire for his appointment in mind, we humbly submit this letter to you, to the Board of Aldermen and to Mayor Wiseman. We also thank you for your serious consideration in this recommendation. May God bless you. Sincerely, Thomas Rogers, Eddie Jones, Charlie F. Barnes, Sr., Johnny F. Johnson, Greg Jones, Lonzy Carpenter, and Joseph Hawkins." And I am Margaret Jordan, and I stand and represent a parent, because I am a parent of Starkville School District. I also hold letters, collective letters of 381 members that are citizens, teachers, business owners, and concerned citizens of Starkville school system and Starkville City that also support Lee E. Brand Jr. for that appointment. Should I give this to you?
Yeah, give him to the city clerk if she can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
To the mayor and Aldermen, our days in McDonald's about the Carver drive a ditch. It have gotten worse. The sewage is running down through it now. It's hard for me to go out of my back door. I'd have pulled someone to bleach out in my house today. I thought it was all in my house. Apparently, it's outside. You can't sit on the front, you can't sit on the back. It smells awful. And I'm pleading with you all to pipe that ditch and cover it because it's getting worse and worse. It's not healthy. The mosquitoes is awful already. The snakes, cute little, my friend said it was a little rattlesnake in my backyard yesterday. He was like that, just dealing with the snake. So I'm begging, pleading to cover Carver Drive Ditch because it's getting awful.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Ms. Frue, the board had received information from the city to know that probably the preferable time to begin is going to be in July. Just continue to monitor that for us and see can we do the board approval work in as soon, if allowable as determined by, you know, your staff. But just stay on top of that so we can address this, you know, as soon as we can, maybe July, but just stay on top of it and let us know. Thank you.
And the Public Services Department has been working on the sewer. In my last conversation with Doug Devlin about it, he indicated that they were nearing the final stages of completion, and I, it's my understanding that that work is expected to be done this summer before the end of June on the sewage repair. Are there any other citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move to public appearances. And our first public appearance this evening is by Dan Moreland, Chairman of the Parks Commission, and Matthew Rock.
As y'all know, we're not coming up here voluntarily. It's mandated that we do this, so... All of you have a copy of our current sports program summary. All of our, not all of them, but most all of our activities is up. We've got approximately 250 girls participating in the, that's 5 through 12, in the girl softball. We threw in volleyball this year. Have four teams in it. Wineona and Columbus have copied us in our high school softball, and so we down a few teams in it. But it's kindly, it's kindly makes you feel good, even though we down, that some of the other schools, towns are copying us instead of us always copying them. As you can see in here, we got, we got a new website coming up. It's be user friendly. It's guaranteed gray-headed people can use it. So I guess that's me, too. But as you see on this page, it goes from age, organized activity, not necessarily sports, but activities from age 5 through whatever. A silly camp deal, got a state award last year, and it's basically what it says, a silly camp, but it works, pays off, it gets kids coming. On the news last week, all the schools are participating, I mean, are trying to cut budgets and do better and cut monies and this type of stuff. In one school, and I'm not going to call the name, but it wasn't in our county, they're going to cut their budget by $200,000 a year by cutting out, cutting out elementary PE. Now, to me, that's working against anything that everybody has said, put your potato chips down, get up off the couch, and go play ball. But, you know, I just hope we don't come to having to cut out activity. I mean, it doesn't cost anything for a ball and a bat or, you know, anything like that, but that's something I hope it doesn't come to. A soccer tournament was rained out last week, 69 teams, and that's probably 1,000 players, not counting grandmothers and granddaddies, mothers and daddies. That hurt us a lot, but, you know, that's just one of those things. We were real fortunate, the weather didn't, didn't do anything to our fields. New Albany, I think, the weather, the rain and all wiped their park completely out. So they said it would be two, three weeks before they could even open back to us. You'll look over on the second page here, those are dogs, they're not deer. The dog park, it's doing good. A lot of people there. We're considering or discussing opening another one on the south side of town. It's been a great success. We got that ditch running through it, but it's so far, it hasn't affected us any long as we keep it clean. The pools, we're reworking the pool, the pool houses and stuff, and they will both open on June 1. That's about all we have, other than what's in here. If y'all have any questions pertaining to this, we'd be glad to let Matthew answer them there.
Questions or comments by the members of the board? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Vaughn?
I'd be grateful, Matthew and Dan. Matthew, I want to thank you so much for the work that you're doing on J.L. King on Westside Pool. It's looked great, you got a new face lift, and I'm sure it's going to attract some attention. Appreciate all the work that y'all have put into it.
Appreciate it. I'd like to add to what Alderman Vaughn said. Matthew's doing a great job, and I would brag on him, but it would ruin my reputation if I bragged on him.
She is taking notice. I support him.
But he does, he does a good job. As I told y'all the last meeting, we have, the gym has been built, and you know it takes a lot to man, to run it, but our payroll has not increased any. In fact, we're down two people from what it was when we built the gym. So anytime you can take on something like that and not increase your payroll, then I think you've done a, you know, pretty good job of managing. We put people to work that had been kind of floating, and they all accepted it, they accepted Matthew's leadership, and I think we've got a good crew, probably the best crew we've ever had. Sammy Willcutt's doing a good job. He, he come here like Bailey Howell and all the rest of them to play basketball out here and forgot to go home. That's about 40 years ago. But Sammy's doing a good job with the youth. He's just fixing to get into his busy time. But what we need all of y'all to do is to encourage people to use the parks. If the numbers up, we have from 350 to 500 that uses the gym and the walking tracks and all every day. But we want to encourage you to send your kids down, bring them down, and let's keep everything going, keep our numbers increasing, because that's what makes all this worthwhile. It's kind of like, you know, you build a business and they say, oh, you don't have enough parking. Well, I hope not. And that's the same way we are with our parking down there. We, we, we running out of parking, but we still looking into doing some more with that. The county is still backed off, they hadn't backed off, but they hadn't built a bridge that they were going to, they will add parking on the south end. That's coming hopefully this summer. It was designed to put in just one bridge across there out of the middle, but the engineers said that they would have to house some pilings down, so that took a little longer, and that's what we holding on now. They've also agreed to cut and smooth up the field down by the Coca-Cola plant, and we're going to house some, hopefully to house some practice fields down on that. We can't put lights because of the airport, but we've worked in agreement with the airport to have that, and once we get it smoothed down to where it's growed up and rutted to the point that we can't do it with our equipment, but the county said that they would come down and bush hog it and smooth it up with a road grader, and then after that, we'll be able to maintain it, and we'll be able to utilize some more space down there. Matthew, do you have anything else?
That's about it.
Well, if y'all have no questions, we appreciate your time. Any...
Further questions or comments?
What I just want to also say, I mean, I noticed on the financial statements, and I mean, your revenues are actually up $43,000, and that's a result of increased rent on the multipurpose building.
Correct.
So that, that's, that's great. I mean, it looks like every category seems to be up.
We had nothing to go by when we come up with that. The rent is coming in real good. We have two churches that meet down there that pays rent, renting out the buildings, but we had no idea who would rent what, but it's just worked out real good. And we appreciate the fact that y'all going to match the dollar per dollar for what we rented for, that's going to help us a lot.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moreland and Mr. Rock. All right, our next public appearance is by John Maynard. Kathy Yelston was unable to make it tonight on the Gap Program. Mr. Mayor?
Kathy Yelston does send her regrets. She is on the coast tonight, working with the company down there. The good news is, it looks as though the economy is turning around considerably, at least in the state of Mississippi, because we've got more people from the NBA, and my peers across the state are much more busy than we have been. Thank you for entertaining, entertaining me. Thanks for having me tonight. I have a good news, bad news scenario to bring to you. Bad news is 30% or more of the population of Occam County lives below the poverty line, the federal poverty line. The good news for that is, number one, the bulk of that is comprised of students who typically have very, very little income and are not necessarily causing a distressed situation. The other piece of good news is that the state of Mississippi has recognized us as a... a Gap-eligible community. The Gap program allows the county, the affected county that has the certain criteria, to be, to use a Gap tool to entice businesses to locate in the area. That tool is predominantly paid for by the state of Mississippi. That's an incentive that allows for the exemption for up to 10 years of sales and use tax on equipment and, and buildings for, or construction equipment and such for expansions of any business creating 10 or more jobs. Also allows for sale, I'm sorry, franchise and income taxes exempt from state income tax for those same businesses. Also allows for a 10-year tax abatement on that property, on the adware tax for that specific company locating or expanding in the area and creating 10 or more jobs. It's a significant incentive. Tunica is a Gap county as well. The Schultz plant that located there, which had in excess of $300 million of investment and over 300 jobs in the, in the next five years. One of the, the primary drivers for that company locating there is the, the Gap incentive that is available. Another company that has actually, that was represented, being represented by the same firm that brought Schultz to, to Tunica County, has also been looking in our area and is very aware of Gap incentives, and we have a, a very good shot at being one of the, one of the counties that is considered for, for this new, for this other company. The county has approved, the, the county has to, has to approve the state's Gap incentive, and they also have to give up essentially their, their right to determine which businesses do and don't get a 10-year tax abatement. They basically pass that off to the, to the state of Mississippi. State of Mississippi has a pretty good vetting process, they understand what we need, what we don't need. They'll work directly with us so that there's no confusion about what companies are Gap-eligible, what companies are not, and they will be looking out for our best interest. We're not going to be parking any and every business that's looking to grab hold of that, that incentive and set up shop, go for 10 years without paying any taxes on it, and then moving out. We're going to be looking at businesses that are growth-oriented, that want to absolutely have a presence here, and who need to be in Octobah County. So we're not looking at, at fly-by-night type companies, we're not looking at anybody that would be ugly-ing up Octobah County. We'd be looking at things that absolutely provide a growth and prosperity for our area. Keep in mind that those taxes that are being exempted do not include school taxes and taxes that are specifically levied for fire and police protection. So those two very important taxes will be, will be included, will be, the companies that locate here will be paying those taxes. Yeah, before your resolution to endorse the, the Gap, the Gap resolution that was passed by the county, I highly recommend that you absolutely endorse that. I thank you in advance for doing so. This is something that is going to set us apart and give us a huge leg up in attracting and growing the businesses that are, are here in Starkville. With that, I want to ask you, any questions about the Gap incentives or, or other things that you may have on your mind?
Questions, comments? Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Maynard, I was actually quite surprised that we were Gap-eligible, and I guess it's two-fold questions, but which counties around us are Gap-eligible? And then on top of that, the second part is, is it the students that put us into the Gap-eligible bracket?
I, I'll, I'll go from the backside. I don't have definite proof that it's the students that put us there. However, when you look at the demographic scales that are there, you can see that the bulk of the people that are living below the poverty line are living in one or two-person households, are in the age group. There's a huge spike in that, that 20 to, 19 to 29-year-olds. There's a huge spike there. All the indicators say that it's college students. You can look around and see that we do have prosperity in Starkville. There are pockets of, of poverty in and around Starkville and in the county, but the bulk of it, you see a fairly prosperous county, so it, it, the numbers sort of add up for it to be students. So that's really anecdotal on my part, and just a, you know, kind of a thumbnail idea about where those demographics are coming from. The other one is, what other counties are around us that are, that are Gap-eligible? District four in Lounes County is Gap-eligible, but they, they're, they don't have a lot of infrastructure and other things that are in place to be able to attract new businesses that are there. As far as being around us, none of the other counties that touch us, I don't believe. I have to, I have to look at the list. Neshova County, I believe, is actually, I'm sorry, Knoxpeck County, Knoxpeck County is actually Gap-eligible. But there again, they're not, they don't have as much infrastructure in place as we do. So we have a, a real opportunity here to be very attractive for both the things that we have already and the things that we can put on the table as far as the Gap incentive.
Further questions or comments?
So this is a separate, our Gap agreement, our program, will be separate than that of the county? Or are they two, are they one or the same?
They're, they're one and the same. What you're doing tonight is actually endorsing what the county has put out there and allowing for the, the taxes that would be levied in this program from the city of Starkville to be included in that.
Obviously only if they locate in the city of Starkville.
Correct. And if they, they meet all the Gap eligibility requirements set up by the state of Mississippi.
Further questions or comments from Mr. Maynard? Any further questions or comments from the board? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Maynard. Our final public appearance tonight is from Bobby Grimes, presenting the proposed formation of the Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force with Chief Lenwood.
Hi, everyone, this is retired Major Bobby Grimes. I'm going to help him with his presentation as far as just an introduction. Bobby is a resident of Starkville, he and his wife. He had a distinguished career with the state narcotics agency. He's been retired, and since he has retired, he has been working for West Point and Clay County on a concept that many of y'all see quite a bit of these days in the media and on television, which is a cold case squad to solve unsolved homicides that are lingering. He has had success there, and is in fact, he and his team has solved two there already that were heretofore unsolved. What Mr. Grimes is going to talk to you about is something that I first dreamed about 25 years ago, which was a concept of having Starkville, West Point, Columbus, and three counties work together against major violent crimes. All three cities and all three counties have unsolved cold case homicides. So we had an opportunity for all of the department heads to get together, the three sheriffs, three chiefs, and that's what you're going to be hearing as a product of that. And there's a little more to it that we'll talk about as far as crime scene work in a minute, but Bobby, as I said, is somebody that we all have total confidence in, and he is retired now. We hope that he'll take this task force, if in fact we can prove it, and run with it. He's going to talk to you a little bit about the implementation of it, and it's going to be not completely reinventing the wheel. It's going to be very similar to the tri-county task force that we had up until a couple of years ago that became unfunded, but that was primarily for narcotics. This is going to be for violent crimes. We will have one of the first ones in the state, but Bobby, I'm stealing your thunder. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having me tonight, and let me speak to you. What we're trying to form is exactly what the chief has explained to you. We're putting together a grant proposal, I've already submitted it to the Department of Public Safety Planning to help fund the formation of this task force, asking for the salaries of everyone involved in the task force. Each agency would be responsible for supplying one officer, one investigator to the task force, except for Clay County Sheriff's Department, and they're going to be supplying an investigator, a director, and an administrative assistant. They've already signed off on their responsibilities to that part. The grant is for two years. It's, it's through the Recovery Act funding. Where, and if the only loop to that or only catch to that is that you have to agree to fund it for one additional year, your employee for one additional year after the funding is expired. That's the requirement of the grant. The salary for your investigator that we've put in for is $34,000 a year. We're asking that each, each agency, over the next two years, commit $25,000 towards the operation of the, the task force, and that money would be used for basic operations, buying equipment that we need for the office and supplies for the office. All investigations and expenses incurred by those investigations will be the responsibility of the agency in which jurisdiction the investigation falls, so it's not going to be a lot of crime lab or travel or anything that goes on any agency except for what they're responsible for on their crimes. Any money that's left over from those two years will be moved back to their host agency to help, help fund for the positions that were valued at $25,000. Which would be the total of $50,000 for, for your city. One of the things that the city of Starkville has is that they were part of the Golden Triangle Task Force when it was dissolved, and there's money still left in the seed's fund account. I think it was like $40,000 and four agencies in it.
From tri-county?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, tri-county task force. So the first year, the only amount of money that you would have to come up with would be $15,000, then $25,000 the next year. The focus of the task force is cold cases to begin with, violent crimes, major crimes that deal with association of drugs and gang activity and any nexus back to those activities. Anybody here knows that most of your crimes have a drug nexus back to, seven percent of your crimes there. The two investigations that we worked in Clay County so far that we haven't died in, it was a direct link back to drug and gang organizations that were making, committing murders to help protect members of the gang organization and the drug organizations. Any investigation that's done by this task force will be filtered through the agency head. There would no, no investigation will go through the task force unless it's approved by the, the chief or the sheriff of the area that the investigation is going to be taking place.
Couple of things I might add to that. We don't have many homicides, thank goodness, in this area of the state, but we all have some. And unfortunately, some of the ones that we have had in the past have been really, really gruesome crimes, and some of these are still unsolved. We continually work on these, however, if you don't have anybody dedicated specifically to work on these type of cases, it's hard to put a lot of effort in it on a continuing basis because other cases are coming along. And all of our criminal investigators are not specialists, but if you will, a doctor, a general practitioner, they might work on everything from burglary to a robbery to a homicide to a car theft. So homicide investigations in our area is something that most people don't get to really specialize in. So once you get into that forte and that mindset, you can do a lot more with it. And on these cold cases, it takes quite a bit of dedication to nothing but them. Now, a caveat of all that is Columbus has a crime lab, and they have a certified forensic scientist over there. And Columbus is expanded on this concept, and we've all agreed to it, that the $25,000 would not only cover our match for the grant, but it would also cover each department being able to have a crime scene officer trained. And what I mean by that is somebody that would go over there for one week out of the month for one year and become a certified, tested, and approved registered crime scene specialist. Now, what we foresee that being is an on-call basis where it would work like this. If any of the jurisdictions have a major crime, you would have two people out of that pool of people on call that would go and work that crime with the jurisdiction agency that has the crime that occurred there. Now, that would give us a lot of expertise and knowledge on working these scenes that sometimes is, again, not always continuous as far as the quality of it. It would give us the ability to work very much more effectively in that area. And if we solved them all, and I certainly hope we do, they do, if we can do this, we would also, and they would also at the same time, be available for fresh major violent crimes if they occur. And unfortunately, they will. I wish I could sit here and tell you that they never will, but I always feel like I'm not but one bad phone call away from the next whodunit homicide, and surely they will happen if we all, you know, remain here. But I think this is a well-thought-out concept. Again, it's not breaking any unplowed ground because it's very similar to the narcotics task force before, but I think this will address some areas that we need to be addressed, and hopefully we'll have some success at putting some of these crimes to, to vet and solve them. And I think it's a great idea for the investment.
This is being set up under the interlocal agreement, just such as Golden Triangle was. And if you choose to, to become a part of this and support it, the only thing that we would need is for the, after your vote of approval, would be the mayor and the city clerk or whoever your testament is to sign off on the interlocal agreement so we can complete all of that.
And Chief, I, I read through your summary of the program today, and I, I just want to commend y'all for being proactive on trends that you're picking up and potential ways for this region as a whole to come together in the area of law enforcement to combat them. I, I think it's an excellent proposal, and just, just want to commend you on your work. Any, Alderman Vaughn?
Mr. Brown, will the agent be full-time or part-time? They'll be full-time, they have to be full-time employees of the agency. That's, that's one of the requirements for the Recovery Act money, where you to spend that money, they're a full-time employee of the agency, they would follow under the agency's policies and guidelines, they would report to the agency head as far as any kind of actions or special duties or disciplinary actions, strictly, strictly under the city policies.
Further questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. Chief, will we have to employ in additional staff to carry out our end other than the financing of it?
No, so the way this works is, is I understand it's going to be just like tri-county was before, where there will be a person hired that will be the city of Starkville person, and we will match a part of that grant, but it's basically just like we had under tri-county, except the emphasis here is going to be violent crimes and homicide as opposed to narcotics.
The host agency for the task force will be the Clay County. They will be handling all the, the reimbursement requests and all the paperwork that will be sent from your department. It will go through Clay County before it goes to DPS planning for, for reimbursement each month. My understanding, it takes about four weeks to get your money back after you pay an officer through the DPS plan once they get the paperwork.
Last question, Chief, is there a line item of $15,000 that covers this at this time, or you'd be asking the board to?
What we anticipate, Mr. Perkins, is we'll attempt to use the money that's left from tri-county.
Yes, sir.
And whatever money we need in it, we've only got until October.
Yes, sir.
Before a new budget kicks in, I think we're going to have enough to
Yes, sir.
Come up with the money that we funded through down October. And the grant's got to be approved as quick as possible.
No, no money would be needed this fiscal year. The grant will not be approved until October, that's usually their approval time, so any money that, that we're asking for will be coming out the next fiscal year.
Will this project die if the grant is not approved?
Yes, well, I don't, I don't know that we'll have the people putting, the agencies will have the money or the manpower to put into the
Right.
The task force.
And I'm guessing we haven't. I mean, we feel pretty confident about our proposal.
You know, Starkville's a lot better off than some of the other agencies around, you know, West Point, Clay County, and they, they really economically strapped, and I just don't see them having the money to put, to free up an officer to strictly work on these type of investigations.
Without the grant.
Without the grant.
Although it's worthwhile enough that I think all of us would if we could. This is a relatively, well, back to the future. Before there was the Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics, Clay, Lounes, and Octobah went together and formed what was then the tri-county of, I'm sorry, the Golden Triangle Narcotics Task Force, and then the state narcotics kicked in, and that was dissolved. So we're just going back on ground that was tread almost 40 years ago. But I think it's more timely now than ever, and having lived with some of these homicide victims in my mind for almost 25 years, I think it's the thing we need to do. think it's the thing we need to do.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board?
So, Chief, you would have to check to make sure we could use the multi, is it the multi-unit drug task force?
It's the, the money left over is the Tri-County task force money that was left over that had not been expended.
Seized funds.
Seized funds, yes. And then any other money was the October 1.
Well, we would not even take that money, use that money till October 1. That's really going to be the kickoff of this whole project as far as funding, and it'll be October 1 this year, fiscal year 11. And the money, we've talked, we've already met with the sheriff here in Octobahall County, and all four agencies were involved in Tri-County, and all four of them have agreed to do it as far as moving their money into this task force, that their equal, their $10,000 share of the $40,000 that's left in the account next fiscal year. And it's allowed by law.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Alderman Corr, would you like to introduce?
Oh, well, sure. This is the same ordinance that was mentioned at the last public hearing we had. Nothing has changed between now and then, although in light of recent events, there'll be some minor changes in, I guess, the legalese of the ordinance between now and the next meeting, so that's the only difference between now and then. There's been no changes in this ordinance yet, so it's as it was.
Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move into the, oh, you did, Alderman Corr.
Just for public record, I had a couple of questions. What would happen if someone wanted to opt out of this or if they wanted to not participate and they lie right in the middle of a Clay historic district?
Well, this ordinance itself doesn't actually mandate the creation of any particular districts. What it does is it creates a commission and, which is similar to planning and zoning. People interested in forming historic district would bring that before the commission, the commission would look at, review it, and then bring that before the Board of Aldermen for final approval. So, if there was someone that were saying a district that didn't want to be, then they would have the opportunity to make that point before both the commission and/or the Board of Aldermen as far as, as far as not being included into the district.
But you come out the whole zone, not individual property.
Right, but people would still be given the opportunity to speak at those meetings and, you know, make the case that even though they're drawn in the district, they would prefer not to be in the district. And then it would be up to the board and/or historic commission to take action.
But as it's currently written, there is no opt-out, there is no opt-out ability for anybody within a certain, with anybody in which a district is determined
Right.
To, if, if the designation of a district exists per the commission, then no individual owner within that district would have the ability to opt out.
Right.
Further questions? Alderman Corr.
I was just going to say, this is more for the formation of the commission than not getting into the day-to-day operations.
Right. Yeah, the framework is that you would establish a commission, and that's the major body of work of that ordinance. And then that commission goes and helps with the heavy lifting of working through how exactly historic districts would operate. So, it's a two-part process. Further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. And in keeping with standard practice on public hearings, we'll conduct this the same way as we have in the past. That is, we will alternate between those wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance and those wishing to speak against. Anyone wishing to speak on either side may be recognized for a maximum of three minutes. Each side will have a total of 15 minutes. Once that is exhausted, then that side's time is exhausted and no one else will be able to speak on that side. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Either one? And please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Michelle Jones. I live at 408 Greensboro Street in Greensboro National Registered District, but actually, I'm here tonight as an employee of the Department of Archives and History. I work with 60 local communities across the state and directly with 30 in the northern part of the state who have adopted a similar ordinance. I work with their commissions, I work with them as they develop design guidelines, as they develop local district designations, and help them. And I am here in that, in that role to answer any questions you might have about this ordinance and how it works in other communities.
Okay, and this time's not really
I understand, but that is, if any of you have any questions, that is my job and that is what I'm happy to do.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance?
I'm Mary Lee Bill, and I thought I was going to start crying when you asked for this to be postponed, because I have been dealing with this for approximately 30 years. I live at 516 Greensboro Street, but I've been involved with the interest of historical preservation for many, for much longer than that. I've lived there approximately 11 years. I know people are opposed to this, but I think they really need to look and understand what their, what their opposition is. There's some this thought that, well, my civil liberties or my property rights are going to be taken away from me. That is not necessarily the case. For those of you who live in areas that have covenants, then you are protected. These districts, these historical districts do not have any covenants, and they are trying to somewhat protect themselves. You want to, this is the commission, they're going to look into it, but one of the reasons that you want historic preservation is you want the preservation of the history and you want the preservation of our community. And if you look at the way Starkville has developed the last 50 years, we have not done a very good job. We have built neighborhoods among businesses, et cetera. For those of you who are, have constituents that are opposed to this, the zoning ordinance is far more restrictive almost than the historic, historical preservation ordinance would be. It's an excellent approach to promoting a municipality, preserving the historic architecture, and cultural resources. Many times objections are based on a misunderstanding of the goals, and this is what I encourage each of you all to talk with your constituents about as to what their objections are. You can look at Madison, Mississippi. They have very, very strict requirements, and it certainly has not inhibited their growth by any stretch of the imagination. Some people say it's another level of bureaucracy. It possibly could be considered that. It's also considered, some consider it an inconvenience. But the bottom line is, the results are positive. Creation of local historic districts stabilize and often increase residential and commercial property values. There are some properties on Gillespie Street, a couple that have sat empty for a number of years. You've got several that need, are desperately being, need repair. You're dealing with the health and safety of the citizens of this community. Historic rehabilitation encourages additional neighborhood investments and produces a high return for the dollar spent. So, I would strongly encourage you in two weeks to please consider creating a historical commission and let the, this commission begin the work in trying to create some possible historic districts in this town. And at the moment, we primarily are looking at the Greensboro area, Overstreet area, and the Nash Street area.
Thank you, Ms. Bill.
Thank you.
Is there anyone now wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak for, against, or in general about the ordinance?
Always gets something there.
Hey, I'm Mark Duncan. I live in Ward 1 at 505 Greensboro Street, and I was part of the committee that actually brought this ordinance before you tonight. To me, what Ms. Bill has mentioned is, is pretty much the gospel according to the things that we need to look at from a historic preservation perspective for the city. When my wife and I sort of first came down to visit Starkville to decide if we would want to move to the city, one of the things that we took back with us were the memories of Greensboro Street. Historic, older historic homes tend to leave an impression on people when they come to visit, and they tend to have a positive influence on them when they go away. And if they start to maybe look at Starkville, to move here either for work or for retirement, positive impressions of the city are always good for us. So, protecting these areas that create a good impression of the city should be, in my mind, foremost for the city. In that regard, I encourage you to pass this ordinance so that we may continue to protect those things that project a positive image for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone wishing to speak for, against, or in general about the proposed ordinance?
I'm Bethany Stitch. I live in Ward 1. I'm married to Mark. But I just want to point out one thing that I didn't know until I saw the agenda, but if you're considering becoming GAAP certified and abating future taxes but not protecting the resources that you have right now that are economic drivers for your city, I mean, in our first impression reports, the historic districts were considered one of the most important parts of their visit to Starkville. It is a pivotal part of Richard Florida's Creative Class Economic Development Drivers formula. So, I would encourage you that if you're willing to abate future taxes for future generations, let's protect our historic resources that we've had over 100 years that are in our community, that are serving as economic drivers before we abate future taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Stitch. Anyone wishing to speak for, against, or in general on the historic preservation ordinance? Any further comment? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move back into discussion by the board, and now would be a good time if any board members have questions for Ms. Jones, who is a local authority on historic preservation, or comments in general. Discussion by the members of the board. Alderman Corr.
I have a couple of questions for any, any member on the committee, but just asking them the simplest way. One, there are a couple of properties on Gillespie that are probably better if they were torn down and just rebuilt, so if they were, clarify, are they going to have to specify or make a house look like the houses next door to it, or would they be free to build a house as long as it pertained to a general look and size? I mean, what kind of specifications do they have? That's fine. Yes, ma'am.
Whatever suits you.
When a local district, when a local ordinance is adopted, it gives a city the right to appoint a commission, and that commission then would recommend to the board the local district. Before doing that, I recommend communities that they develop design guidelines for rehabilitation and new construction. It is my, every community has different preservation methods, and whatever those design, whatever that ethic is, should be reflected in the design guidelines. The things that I've tried to help communities work with are in respect to setbacks, scale, and massing, because those are really what can look out of place in the community. But those, with, all of that would be developed within the guidelines that the commission would work on. I personally believe that architecture needs to be developed over time, and I think that cheats the current age to do something as derivative. And so, I think that modern architecture needs to work as if it was built in 2010. But again, that's connected to the community.
And my second question, is this commission, if established, mainly targeting houses over 50 years old, is that correct?
That is the standard number established by the National Park Service. It's about a generation and a half, and that's why it exists. With the Department of Archives and History, with the really renewed interest in civil rights, we've sometimes not looked at younger than 50 years, but again, it's up to the community. 50 years is, is kind of the standard.
Further discussion by the members of the board? Any further discussion by the members of the board? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, that will conclude our second public hearing on an ordinance creating a historic preservation commission. And that will move us to mayor's business. And the first order of business is the consideration of changing the mayor's beautification committee to the city of Starkville Beautification Committee with the adoption of mission statement, purpose, and structure. And just for starters on this one, the name change should not be taken to in any way imply that I am not friendly to city beautification efforts. To the contrary, the name change implies that this committee has grown and succeeded beyond its original scope, which was more informal, and now needs a more formalized structure in keeping with the complement of standing committees that we have in the city. So, this is a positive development for beautification committee. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, I see a list of names on the handout that is in our packet that says Beautification Committee Membership. It has a list of names and two liaisons represented from this board and a staff liaison. The Beautification Committee Membership is not consistent with the city of Starkville Beautification Committee that's already in place. Is it your intent that we keep the same existing beautification committee in addition to these names, whereas under the existing membership, there is one member from each ward? And so, when you look at the handout, I had to kind of go and track some information there, it wasn't all contained in this document. If you see the list here, it gives individuals from different areas of expertise, but if you go further into the packet, it lists further information about our, the names of committee members. You'll see wards 5, 1, 3, 6, in other words, the different members from, representing from different wards. So, I, we just need to make it clear, if we approve this document that's before us, that we hopefully will not eliminate any existing membership. If anything, I think we need to add, I think the members, well, matter of fact, the members that we do have have done an exemplary job, and I have been a part of the appointment of these individuals from each ward to this beautification committee. So, we just need some clarification from you on that.
Yeah, and it is certainly not my intent to eliminate anybody who is an active part of this committee. This committee has, I guess, morphed as it has drawn interest from people from outside of the committee and as people have become more active participants. My understanding is that the committee has grown to the membership that you see listed here. Alderman, do Mr. Corr, do you want to comment kind of on how this committee's developed?
I'll speak to that, and I just, as Alderman Perkins was mentioning this, there's a, on the, the beautification committee structure, it does list that each representative will be from each ward. But I will say that the intent of the people that are listed on this committee, on the proposed membership, are those, as you talked, that have really morphed and continued to come to the meetings. come to the meetings. We've had several meetings, we've had several significant developments, raising of monies, and I commend the committee chair, Dylan Cargus, for most of that work. But I forget the time in which I came to the first, as the liaison to the board, the first meeting, but since that time, these are the individuals who have shown an interest and have continued to come to those meetings. I, for one, personally think that in this, from this standpoint, that there's some significant attributes are, the specificity of the focus of each member is vitally important, not disregarding the ward aspect, but it's kind of a, this is what's left standing type of approach to those that have been involved and want to still continue.
Well, and the way the structure is worded is that it would be, at least, a representative from each ward, or a minimum of seven with an attempt to have at least a representative from each ward. So a thought on this is you could adopt the list of active participants as it stands, and then where you don't have representation from a ward, you could advertise for letters of interest to fill that out. Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, let me just respectfully say, as a matter of integrity and credibility for this city, with regard to these distinguished civic-minded individuals who are already on this committee, we need to be extremely careful not to write these people off of this committee. I think it would be, the best and prudent approach would be to approve your recommendation with the existing membership in addition to the proposed membership, and you can have your staff to check to see, does any of the existing membership no longer desire to serve? And I think that would be the healthiest way to approach this, because we don't want to send any negative indications or indicators out from this. So I would propose that, you know, it is the will of the board to, if we approve this proposal along with the existing membership together with the proposed membership, and if there's someone who does not want to serve, then we can always remove them at a later time.
Yeah, I concur with everything you just said, and I just want to reiterate, as far as I'm concerned, if anybody is interested in city beautification, I would like to see them have a seat at this table. There's certainly no purpose to keep somebody from sitting in a meeting. So if I understand what you were saying, it was a suggestion to adopt the existing membership and also the names that are attached with the structure. I think it's an excellent idea.
And I'll put in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made, let me make sure I get it right. To approve the renaming of the Mayor's Beautification Committee to the City of Starkville Beautification Committee, adopting the structure, purpose, and bylaws, and confirming the appointees of membership as attached in addition to the original members of the committee. Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second? Motion, but seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion by the members of the board? Is there any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion seeing none? All those in favor please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Let's put on the pass. Next matter on the agenda is the discussion of a consideration for a date for the city bus tour recap with strategic planning session. And everybody should have, although I can't find mine, a calendar. Did they end up? If everybody else has got it, that works.
It was left on our table.
Okay, yeah, a calendar, and this is a follow-up, I guess, to the matter introduced two weeks ago, and that is setting a date where we can do two things. I think ideally we need to set aside about four hours, at least two of which can be devoted to bus ride ward by ward, where we look at different infrastructural issues that each of you have in your own ward, so that everybody gets a broader understanding of what each of you faces. And then two hours or less revisiting our strategic plan, which we have a draft of, but it's going to need some tweaking before we actually adopt it. So this would be kind of an extended work session, and could be either on a Saturday or a long afternoon on a weekday. Y'all have thoughts on that?
Time's getting pretty packed, so we need to do it.
Yeah, and I would suggest that we look at the weeks in between board meeting weeks, because I don't think you would want to do a board meeting and then turn right around and do this. So if you look at the month of May, that would give us either next week, the week beginning on Monday, the 10th, or the week after the meeting on the 18th, which would be the week beginning on Monday, the 24th. Just a general thought, I think either Friday afternoons or Saturdays probably tend to have the least schedule conflicts. I know, Alderman Perkins, you mentioned that you preferred weekends at the last meeting?
That'll be fine, yes, sir.
Well, let's take that first Saturday, the 15th. Any conflicts on Saturday? You got one?
I mean, I, I just have to try, I mean...
We can look at the 29th. Are there any conflicts on the 29th? Is that Memorial Day weekend?
It is.
Yeah, I'm going the 29th.
The 15th is probably going to be a better shot than the 29th. Do you have something you think is flexible or not movable?
I could know tomorrow, but I can't, I mean, I would have to call other people to find out if it's flexible or not.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I guess let's work for now with the idea of the 15th, knowing there's a chance we may not have Alderman Parker. Is it morning or an afternoon session, or midday? Better. What do y'all think?
On a Saturday, the 15th?
Yeah.
I think I'd rather do it in the morning.
Morning.
Morning?
Do it as early as possible.
Anybody opposed? The morning? Start your ball.
But still, if Alderman Parker's not there, it still doesn't stop us from visiting his ward.
No, absolutely not. And as we get closer to doing it, we're going to have to work through it logistically. And one of the things that I think will be helpful is for everybody to see the things that are scheduled for work from the city engineer, but also maybe things that aren't scheduled for work that you know of in your ward that the discussion needs to be had about. One of the best ways I can think of to do that is perhaps if everybody coordinates with the engineer leading up to, so he's got a good schedule of things to show in each ward. So perhaps a way we could do that in the event that you weren't able to make it, if you could go on and have the items to be shown in your ward coordinated with the city engineer.
Do eight to 12?
Eight to 12.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
On the 15th? We don't necessarily have to have a motion on this, we can just all know that that's the time to do it. It will be an open meeting, so of course, press is invited, and there'll be space on the bus.
Kelly, you buy breakfast, Tim, you buy lunch.
Any further discussion on that? All right, so right now, the date for the bus tour and the strategic planning revisit is going to be from 8 to 12 on Saturday, May 15.
What did you say, two hours each?
Yeah, yeah. I think the strategic plan will take less time than the bus ride will, but at the same time, nothing has proven short thus far with the strategic plan, so I hesitate to say that.
Mr. Mayor, since you said it's going to be an open meeting, remember to recess until this time at the end of the meeting.
Well, it'll be a work session.
Okay, I think you said open meeting. Okay, I'm with you then.
Okay. Okay. All right, any further discussion on that? Any further discussion? Seeing none, the next matter on the agenda is the consideration, all right, where is? Okay. Consideration of the approval of the necessary engineering, design, and construction work for an emergency repair of a heavily damaged bridge on Old West Point Road. I'm sure most everybody in here is aware, read the account in the paper today of a bridge failure that we had due to heavy, heavy rain over the weekend and the weekend before on Old West Point Road. That bridge, what happened, and I'm not an engineer, so let me offer that disclaimer, but the side of that channel got eroded and trees fell into the creek that that bridge runs over, caused all the water to rush up on one side of the bridge and essentially took all of the foundation out from under that wall of the bridge. And as traffic began to pass over it, a portion of it actually gave away, so there was a hole in the top side of the bridge. And fortunately, no one was injured, and the scene was controlled as quickly as it was discovered. The city engineering department is going to be out, they have been out some, surveying along with the street crew of the damage previously, but they're going to be out doing a comprehensive survey of damage from the storms that we've seen, starting tomorrow, to determine what the comprehensive effect on infrastructure at risk may have been from the storm. This matter deals specifically with the emergency of getting the bridge on Old West Point Road passable and ultimately repaired again. The city engineer has worked on different funding sources. He has found a source to get the initial preservation process of it done, where the bridge condition will be stabilized through a grant from USDA. We are unsure, it's unknown yet whether there will be additional funds to complete the bridge project, but as of right now, those funds would have to come in-house. So what this is, noting that the bridge has to be repaired, and we will not sit down again for another two weeks, it gives the city engineer the latitude to be able to go forward in a worst-case scenario, which could well come into fruition of having to use city funds to get the bridge operational, and it asks for up to $70,000.
Mr. Mayor, and if and when the board approves this, this appropriation will not disturb any monies that already been earmarked for any specified projects, will it?
No. No, it, this money in a worst-case scenario, and again, I guess the worst-case scenario is very plausible in this case, because right now, we do not have another source of funding other than the funds, which will be minimal from USDA, would come from the road and drainage funds in future years. Now, ultimately, the board would have to make a determination as to which street project would be displaced. Alderman Corey.
To echo what you said, then, the line item you're recommending has come from the erosion and drainage funds, or what?
It would come from it in future year. And Ms. Spruill, do you want to elaborate on that?
As planned right now, we come from the capital improvement projects that will be projected into next year, but we are hoping that the 85-15 match will take a large portion of that, and that we have, as the mayor identified a little bit earlier in the day, a road, an airport road that's on the plan that will be probably part of a grant that is coming later on, so we'll be able to not have the impact that conceivably would have if we had no other source of funding.
Will this request involve the need for emergency purchasing as well? And if so, then do you need to have us craft a motion in a way that allows for that, as far as the bidding process goes and everything for the work?
Well, we're going to go out and get, that's a better question from Marquita. We would have got an engineering firm that is on staff, basically, that we can recruit as board to have as a resource, but for emergency purchasing standpoint, I'll let Marquita address that.
As far as the emergency purchasing, we will need to declare this being emergency and use the emergency purchase bid laws for that. And that way, we won't have to go through a bidding process.
So we'll need to make a finding of fact that the emergency purchase is necessary for the benefit and welfare of the community, given the washout of the bridge, and just spell that out in the body of the motion.
Okay, so does the motion that makes finding a fact of the emergency have to be a separate motion, or can it be a part of the motion?
It can be a part of the motion.
It needs to be a part.
Okay. All right, so...
How's this need to read?
Well, the important thing is the city engineer has set a budget of $70,000, which is intended to be the worst-case scenario. So ideally, it would give the city engineer enough latitude to spend up to $70,000, and also, the city clerk and the city attorney have noted that there needs to be a declaration of emergency, so that's another essential component. Alderman Corey.
I don't, I don't quite have PC's flair for motions, but I was trying to do my best to come up with one real quick. So that said, I would move that we approve the emergency repair of Old West Point Road, the Old West Point Road Bridge, to come from the capital improvements line item, and that the city recognize this as an emergency purchase based on the finding of fact that is contingent upon the needs and welfare of the people of the city of Starkville. Oh, with an amount not to exceed $70,000.
Okay, so would be approval of necessary engineering, designing, construction work for the repair of a heavily damaged bridge located on Old West Point Road, an amount not to exceed $70,000, contingent upon the finding of fact, needs and welfare of the citizens.
Okay.
Okay.
It is necessary to ensure the health of an emergency.
Yeah, of an emergency.
Repair to ensure.
Okay. Alderman Corey has made a motion to approve the necessary engineering, design, and construction... Alderman Corey has made a motion to approve the necessary engineering, design, and construction work necess, or no, for the engineering, design, and construction work for the emergency repair based upon a finding of fact that it is necessary to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Starkville of a heavily damaged bridge located on Old West Point Road in an amount not to exceed $70,000. Is that your motion?
No, yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, yeah. Motion has been seconded by Alderman Demas. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the mayor's?
Uh, no.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And that concludes mayor's business. Without objection, I would move us into a brief recess. Is there any objection moving into brief recess before we move to board business? An objection seeing none.
I need to know this.
Meeting will now come back to order. We are now into board business, and the first matter of board business before us is the interview of candidates for the vacant Starkville School Board position. And we will conduct these interviews in alphabetical order. Now, this is an open meeting. Uh, yeah. Recuse yourself, please. We'll give Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Demas a moment to exit the room. This is an open meeting, so no one can be compelled to leave the room. However, this is an interview process, so what the board has asked as a courtesy in the past is that applicants not being interviewed, if you so choose, out of respect for your fellow applicants, leave the room while they do their interview, so as to not disadvantage somebody who might go first, where somebody else would have heard their entire interview. So we will proceed with Dr. Akins first, Reverend Brand will be second, and Dr. Shannon will be third. And each candidate will have an opportunity to make an opening statement of your choice not to exceed five minutes. Dr. Akins?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Erica Akins. I was born and raised in Starkville. I'm a proud graduate of Starkville Public School Systems, which laid the foundation for my college career. I graduated in 1990. I was active in the band. I did a few plays. I wasn't very good at it, but I did it anyway. In the first grade, my grandmother told me, I went home one day, and I distinctly remember her telling me, I said, Grandma, I hate school. She said, quit school. And then my graduation in December with my PhD, she said, I thought I told you to quit school. You kept going, and you never quit. I'm not a quitter, I'm a fighter. I have a 14-year-old daughter that's in the Starkville Public School Systems, who's active in cheerleading, the band, JROTC, who was at cheerleading practice when I was walking through the door here. So I'm a runner. I run around. I participate in everything that the school district have, pretty much. I'm always with her. I'm supportive of everything that she does. Now, what my goals, what I want to do with the school district is I want everybody to come together for the betterment of the children, the community, the administrators, the parents, everybody. I'm really excited about the quality of our administrative team. I think they're doing a great job so far. I'm looking forward to learning from them, as well as helping them. With all my years of school, I am a researcher, I am an educator. I currently work at East Mississippi Community College, and I teach child psychology and human growth and development, and I actually love my job. And I told myself, when I was teaching at Overstreet, I was a PE assistant, that I want to get back with those students, not in K through 12, but in a different way. And sure enough, those students that I taught many years ago have come back through me at East Mississippi Community College, and it's been a great reward. All children can learn. It's up to us to find out how they can learn, and that's my goal. That's my goal. Another goal of mine is to assist the administrators. I just want to assist. I want to learn from them, and I want them to learn from me, all that I can. I want to increase the graduation rate and decrease the dropout rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akins. Now open the floor for questions from the members of the board. Are there any questions? Alderman Carver.
First of all, just on behalf, I'm sure of the mayor and the board office, thank you for putting your name into this hat. You've become highly qualified and highly recommended, so again, thank you for putting that in. And we've got a long question. I'm not familiar with Chalk Town Road. Is that inside the city limits?
It's Rolling Hill subdivision.
Okay, that's my only question.
Further questions from the members of the board? Alderman Corey.
Something I'm going to ask all the candidates. Would you try to just say something that you think the school system, in your opinion, is doing right, and something that you think the school system should do better?
Okay. What I think they're doing right, one thing, for example, is the block schedule. I know a lot of people have a problem with the block schedule. But for a lot of students who's very active, some students aren't as active, but it gives them an extra day. And for those of you who are not familiar with the block schedule, they have classes every other day. Those same classes like Monday, Wednesday, Friday of this week and the next week is Tuesday, Thursday, and so on and so forth. So to me, it gives children something different, you know, instead of going to the same classes, six classes or seven classes daily, they get to go to four classes a day. And I think that's, that's good. It gives them that opportunity to do their homework, get it done, work on projects without being, not as stressed. Something I think they're not doing well, or not as well, I think is the communication between maybe parents, community, the students.
Further questions from the members of the board? Alderman Carver.
I'm just going to reiterate on that, on the communication and accountability. What would be your plans, we've gotten complaints through this whole process of maybe saying there's a lack of accountability on the school board members. What would you do to incorporate more accountability between yourself, put on the board, and say, parents and superintendents?
Alderman Carver, I'm a researcher and an educator. I want to emphasize that again. I believe in researching, and researching some more. Now, annual yearly progress, that's what the schools need and have to meet in order to keep their head above water. Two schools in the state of Mississippi does that, and that's Past Christian and Boonville. I would love to be able to talk to them to see what it is that they do in order to accomplish their goals. Because if we're not doing it, maybe we can incorporate it. Maybe we can learn from them. And I mean, it's a team effort. I think the whole state of Mississippi wants our students to be a lot better than what they are.
Alderman Sishtra.
I have a couple of questions, and I, like Alderman Corey, will ask each of the candidates this. The school board is an oversight board, a supervisory board. What do you see as the most important role that you can play in influencing the improvements that we all want to see in the Starkville's school systems as a board member?
As a board member, I want to be fair. I want to represent the students, those who don't have a voice. I want to be there for the parents as well, and just provide my input. I don't have any, any dog in this fight, as far as, I'm not connected to anybody politically in this room. So I have my own agenda, as far as my own mind, I think for myself, and I just want to do what's right.
And the other question I have is, this is our second round of applications. We had excellent applicants the first time. We have good applicants, excellent applicants again this time. Why now? Why not the first time through?
Well, everybody says, they, I've been asked that, why now? I wasn't ready. I was not ready. I don't feel like mentally I wasn't there, and then I asked myself, why not now? And so I did a little soul searching, and so now is this better as an opportunity as any?
Thank you.
Further questions by the members of the board? Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Any further questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Akins.
Thank you.
And could someone go and tap Reverend Brand? And Reverend Brand, would you like to make an opening statement?
Nothing more than to say, I mean, that for, my reason for applying for this and submitting my name is just that for our schools, I see a lot of potential, and I think that based on the community's support of my name, just being able to connect our school to the community, and I think thus far, that's kind of been a disconnect. And I think that would suffice as my opening statement, just to be able to, I guess, reattach those two. There seems to be some disconnect there, and that's the heart of why I'm here.
Thank you, Reverend Brand. Questions from the members of the board? Alderman Corey.
This is a question I'm asking all three candidates, and that is, kind of tell us something that you feel the Starkville School District is doing right, and something that you feel like the school district can do better.
Something they're doing right and something they can do better, am I correct, in that being your question?
Yes.
I mean, for the standpoint of, I guess, doing right, I think there are some attempts being made to to better our school district as a whole in some regards, from all aspects, administrative and throughout. And I think that would be a strength. Now, with regard to something that is being done wrong, I go back to kind of what I said in my opening statements, just the disconnect that I feel there is between our current board and the community. And one issue that I guess I would just raise to argue that point, not that it matters to me one way or the other regarding uniforms, but there were several attempts made to gather the community's position on that matter. And the community, I think, spoke soundly each time, but the school board went ahead, and in my opinion, around the community to make the decision that was made with regard to that issue. So I think that would be a weakness. I think if we're going to maximize the potential of our district, we're going to have to be able to connect our schools with the community, because we're in a great community. We're in a place that has great resources, and I don't know that we're tapping to those as much as we can.
Further questions? Alderman Sishtra.
I too am asking the same questions. The school board is an oversight, supervisory-type board. What do you see the most important role as a school board member that you would have in influencing and improving the city schools?
And this is going to kind of sound like recycling in a sense. But again, to know what the concerns are of our community, to make sure that our students and our community is being heard with regard to our school system. And I think that would be our job to play in that.
And my other question was, as you know, obviously, this is the second round of applications that we've taken for this position. Why now?
Quite frankly, many people in the community asked, and with that in mind, after their asking, and quite frankly, my prayer over the matter, I submitted.
Thank you.
Further questions from the members of the board? Are there any further questions? Alderman Carver.
Do you reside within city limits?
Yes, I do. 101 LaFors Street, Rolling Hill subdivision.
And do you have any children in the school district?
My children are not old enough to go to school here now, but I do pastor members in the city schools. And my kids will go to Starkville City Schools when they're old enough.
Further questions from the members of the board? Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Reverend Brand.
Thank you.
Could someone go and tap Dr. Shannon?
Come on in.
And Dr. Shannon, would you like to make an opening statement?
Sure. My name is Raj Bodh Alderman. And fellas, citizens of Starkville, thank you. It's a privilege to be here. 11:15 on Friday morning, I was still debating whether I wanted to send in my application. But the admonishment my father gave me when I was six years old haunted me, and I thought, I must. Gandhi said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." Taking that admonishment, and having lived here in Starkville for the last 38 years, I thought I needed to throw my hat, my name in the hat. As far as having been here and being a student at Mississippi State, having had a business here, been at Texas A&amp;M, I'm an immigrant. I was born in Kenya, went to school in England, been here, like I said, for 37 years. I am a vice president of Workforce and Economic Development at East Mississippi Community College. I have put probably 14, 15 nephews and nieces in the 70s and 80s through the school system here, and I have two lovely children right now who are in the seventh and eighth grade. What really pushed the button for me was the last process y'all had. Having an eminently qualified person to be disregarded because of their race rubbed me the wrong way. And I'm looking at you, mayor, directly, and when you talked about numbers of 64% of this race, and 33% of that, and 1% Asian-Americans, and 2% Hispanics. My whole life has been devoted to get away from that. To have brought that up, I thought was an insult, not only to the community, but also for us who love this community. That was the final thing that forced me into saying that I am that 1%, but I represent the will, and perhaps the ambitions and the aspirations of the folks in this community just as well as anyone else does. If you want to look at qualifications, I think higher than qualifications, y'all have a brief resume in front of you. I work with businesses, whether they are the American Eurocopters or the Pacars. I work with schoolchildren. I work with getting grants to enhance our academic and intellectual capabilities. I serve on the education board with the Greater Starkville Development Partnership. We work with the county and the city. We have eminently qualified and dedicated teachers. I went to the meeting, the public forum that was held in Greensboro Center over the uniform issue. I was pleased to see that there were 300 people there that were so happy to participate in an issue that hit home to them for some reason. I also asked them, it would be nice, it's the same, 300 people showed up, when we were talking about our achievement gaps, or the considerations of removing our Viva programs, or security issues, or whatever. Given Martin Luther King's admonishment that an individual's skin color should not be the criteria for judging people, it is whether you have the character and the competence. If nothing else, lift to that. Okay?
One minute.
I teach three-hour lessons. Go ahead.
All right, are you ready for questions?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
Questions from the members of the board? Alderman Corey.
I'll jump in. This is something I've been asking all the candidates, and I would just like to ask, tell us something that you feel the Starkville School District is doing right, and something that you feel the Starkville School District can do better.
The best of ours are doing great. The advanced placement things, the educational stuff, whether it's college algebra, or enhanced drama activities, the science labs, and all that, we're doing really well. If you look at the indicators that came from the state, even though we are considered at risk, if you look at those who are doing... Words escaped me at the moment. The top two... What are those criteria? Anyway, I have a memory gap. Sixty-two years of age. We'll do that. Highly performing and all that. Thirty-seven percent of our children are in that range. That is the best in the state of any school. So the things we are doing good, we're doing excellent. Whether it's demographics, or socioeconomics, or whatever they are. We have also a lot of people that are bifurcated, that are on the lower end, and the averages and all that bring us to the state levels of being at risk. So the school system does have great things. I think parent involvement is one of the challenges we have, and I think the communication, both from the superintendent and the administrators, and from others in, perhaps even the school board. I think the communication gap is there. We do not communicate well with the parents.
Further questions? Alderman Sishtro.
You answered one of my questions, which was, why now, as opposed to the first time through with our round of applications, so I'll skip that one. The other is that the school board is an oversight supervisory type board, and what do you see as the most important role as a school board member that you have in influencing the improvement of our schools?
To demand rigorous and relevant instruction. And that has, it is, to support the superintendent and other administrators, but also not be too hesitant without overpowering the superintendent's role, to listen to the teachers, and to listen to the parents, and to listen to the students. That doesn't mean everything can be that democratic, that if the students decide they don't like the thing, that we go with that, or whatever. But I think, besides being... That was one of my tussles, and I have talked to a lot of different school board members, whether in Columbus or Caledonia, or DeSoto County, or wherever, to see how proactive can you be, what your role is, and what your limitations are. That's why perhaps staying on the outside, I considered, then I can be more effective. But I would not, I would be remiss if I did not get involved and see if my various experiences, life and otherwise, can't be of some guidance and need, and fulfill a need as it arises with the administrations and other interested parties.
Thank you.
I know it was wordy, perhaps had no sense at all.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Let me make... Can I make one last?
You may.
I know these two other individuals. They're qualified. The Aikens and I teach at the same college. Okay? You will not go wrong in choosing one of the three. I was hoping perhaps there were going to be more. But I was also hoping that perhaps there were going to be people of diversity.
Further questions? Any further questions from the members of the board? Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Shannon. You're welcome. And thank you to all of the applicants for coming forward and going through the interview process. Next matter of board business is the consideration of making an appointment to the vacant Starkville School Board position. Discussing. Is there any discussion from the members of the board? Any discussion?
Mayor, may I speak?
Alderman Corey.
I think we had three great applicants. I just think, I can't speak for the rest of the board. I know that I'm trying to still process what we just heard, because we heard three really good interviews, and it's difficult to come off of something like that right away and immediately make a decision.
Yep.
I understand the frustration and the desire for us to make an appointment tonight, but I too think I would make a better, I would make a better decision if I had an opportunity to contemplate what I've heard tonight.
So if I ask you, would you prefer waiting until the next meeting?
That would be my preference, but I'm certainly going to go with what the board wants to do.
I would discourage that on the basis that this process has gone on for a long time. And the Starkville School Board is still sitting with a vacancy. And if there is no new information that is to be obtained, I would strongly encourage the board to act this evening, because as I have stated previously, coming to the end of what has been a very long and tortured process, it is important for us to fulfill our responsibility, which is to send one, someone to Starkville School Board. And I would encourage that we don't wait another couple of weeks, and I guess I'll ask the city attorney to weigh in on our statutory obligation might be affected by this.
Yeah, the statute speaks, and we've mentioned this in every meeting, that the election shall be made by the majority of the governing members of the Board of Aldermen, and that election shall take place the first meeting of February. And we know we're behind based on all the things that have happened, but acting today would be within the spirit and tenor of the statute, to try to get this done, to bring closure, to meet the timing requirements of the statute.
We've surpassed that, though, right now.
We have surpassed that now.
So we'd be in the same situation two weeks from now that we're in right now?
We would.
This is, again, the most unique of tasks that the board has. Very similar to the city holding an election. This is actually referred to in the statute as an election. And what we are doing now, if there is undue delay, would be akin to pushing an election off further and further down the calendar. And again, it does bear consequences for a school board that currently has only four members in a vacant position.
Alderman Carver.
Mayor, I move approval of appointing Dr. Erica M. Aikens to Starkville School Board for the term 2010 through 2015.
Alderman Carver has made a motion to appoint Dr. Erica M. Aikens to a term on the Starkville School Board beginning in 2011 and ending on, and ending in 2015. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Seeing no second, motion fails for lack of second.
Mayor.
Alderman Parker.
I move approval of appointing Lee Brand to Starkville School Board for the term 2010 to 2015.
Alderman Parker has made a motion to appoint Reverend Lee Brand to the Starkville School Board for a term beginning on 2010, and I paused because I think I said 2011 a minute ago, and ending on 2015. Is that your motion, Alderman Parker?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Parker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Discussion? Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into a vote, and we'll take this vote by roll call on Alderman Parker's motion to appoint Reverend Lee Brand to the Starkville School Board for a term beginning in 2010 and ending in 2015. Please answer yea, nay, abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sishtro?
Abstain.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
By a vote of four in favor, with zero against, and one abstention, the measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is a report on the finding...
Could you have time for the Alderman to get in?
Oh, yeah. We'll give other Aldermen a moment to get back in the room. All right. The next matter on the agenda is the report on the findings regarding speeding concerns on Bluefield Road. At our last meeting, Pastor Bonner, who pastors the church on Bluefield Road, came and expressed concerns about speeding on Bluefield Road. At the request of Alderman Perkins, the chief administrative officer, and the chief of police actually have gone out and surveyed the scene in order to determine what the current condition is, and what things might be done that can improve the condition from multiple aspects.
You can continue. You didn't need me up here, obviously.
Well, no, y'all were the ones that actually saw and did the observation.
The chief of police and I went out, rode the Bluefield Road from twelve to the city limits, and there were several things that we found that involved the street department and the electric department, as well as the police department, so let me give credit where credit is due. We determined that that area needed streetlights. There were no streetlights at all along Bluefield Road, so we worked with Mr. Hattaway to coordinate with four counties to get some streetlights at appropriate intervals along that road. We also noted that the street speed limit signs were poorly placed in terms of getting sufficient notice just as you come off twelve for the speed limit appropriate for that road. So we adjusted the location of that closer to twelve so that the notification would be there. And then the chief of police indicated he would step up the amount of patrol that went into that area to deter any speeding that might be going along. So hopefully, we'll monitor it, and that will satisfactorily solve the problem that was being experienced.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly.
Yep.
Reverend Bonner, we've discussed that. You heard the report. I think you should be exceedingly pleased with that. I think you would concur. Is that your assessment?
Yes, sir. I say, I'm just like the mayor of the board, and for the effort, and I'm sure that I take the report back to the church here, we satisfied. And I have my concerns with school and our children, our school riding, and that we don't want that to happen. So we should appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Bonner.
And thank you, Ms. Prue and Chief Lindley, for the work you did in assessing the scene.
Alderman Perkins?
I just want to say that thank you very much. I'm sorry. Thank all of y'all very much. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the Bluefield matter? Any further discussion?
All right. Seeing none, next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the adoption of a tree advisory board with mission statement, rule and structure, and the appointment of members to said committee.
Alderman Dumas?
Thank you. This is something I brought forward last time. Asked to give a little more time for consideration for this matter, so I just want to briefly introduce this. As part of your staff recommendation sheets, you have the actual structure, term and office rules, purposes and goals. The, as I've started this conversation, and I've gone through several iterations of this, and Richard, you can chime in here in a little bit. The Urban Forestry Commission for the State of Mississippi has been in contact with us. Richard has worked with them. We have a workshop happening Thursday. And what this will do, what this tree advisory board will do, and what that workshop will do, will help us with all matters regarding tree care, other type issues within the city. And we see this as a real positive for how we can continue to increase our tree canopy coverage, et cetera. And I've worked with Stephen Grado, who is a part of the Mississippi Urban Forestry Council, to help put this group together. And as it so happens, Ben Griffith, our city planner, has been drafting a landscape ordinance for a couple of years. And part of that ordinance, part of his recommendation, is for us to establish a tree advisory committee as well. And so as, not only we're working through ordinance issues and adoptions and amendments with the comprehensive plan, this is part of the recommendation that our planner has as part of how he sees this moving forward. So with that, I'd like to move approval of the creation of a tree advisory board as presented, the structure and the appointment of the membership as outlined in the enabling document. And the appointment of the members as provided in the board packet to include ISA-certified arborist Pam Collins, GIS specialist Wayne Wilkerson, landscape architect Brian Templeton, Mississippi Urban Forestry Council representative Stephen Grado, planting college is Robert Bruzak, tree and landscape ordinance specialist Chris Campini, and horticulturist Richard Harkus.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve the creation of a tree advisory board, and Alderman Dumas, I believe the motion you made is as printed in the packet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Alderman Corey, Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Discussion. Alderman Parker.
Does this, section thirty-one, does that also go into that?
Yeah, and I don't, I shouldn't confuse that. The section thirty-one, the draft, is just a print of the page of the ordinance that Ben has been working on. So this is no official part of what we are adopting. Yeah, and I apologize for that confusion. I put this on your table just so you could see the language in which he has been working for the last couple of years, moving forward with the landscape ordinance.
Okay. And this is an advisory committee that will bring things to us?
That will bring things to the board.
Alderman Carver.
I may have missed it, but who's your Board of Aldermen liaison and your city staff liaison?
City staff liaison is, as it reads in the structure, city of Starkville staff liaison from the landscape division of the public works department to assist the tree advisory board as appropriate in achieving its purpose and goals. At this point, we do not have a liaison from the board.
Further discussion? Any further discussion on Alderman Dumas's motion? Any further discussion, any further discussion?
discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of making an appointment to the board of adjustment and appeals position in Ward Two with a term ending June 30th, 2010. Discussion?
Mayor, I move approval of appointing Milo Burnham to the Starkville Board of Adjustments and Appeals for Ward Two for the term 2010 to 2015.
Alderman Sisdruck has made a motion to approve Milo Burnham to the Starkville Board of Adjustment and Appeals for Ward Two for the term from 2010 to 2015. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Sisdruck, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. Alderman Sisdruck.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Burnham for his past two years of service.
The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of making an appointment to the commission on disability for positions with terms ending on June 1st, 2010. Discussion?
Again, I move approval of appointing Beth Ann Elsie and Whitney Hilton to the Starkville Commission on Disability for the terms 2010 to 2014.
Alderman Sisdruck has made a motion to approve the appointment of Beth Ann Elsie and Whitney Hilton to the Starkville Commission on Disability for the term from 2010 to 2014. Alderman Sisdruck, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Sisdruck, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Thank you.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the consideration of making an appointment to the Parks Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2010. Discussion? Any discussion?
Mayor, it would be, it would be my honor to move that we reappoint Chris Taylor back to the Park Commission for another term.
Alderman Corey's made a motion to approve the appointment of Chris Taylor to the Starkville Parks Commission for a term from 2010 to 2017. Alderman Corey, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Nope.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the amendment of the public appearances policy to reflect a maximum number of public appearances and public hearings for any board meeting. Alderman Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the recognition. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for the board to give unanimous approval to this proposed board policy for public appearances and public hearings at the City of Starkville board meetings. It is my opinion that this is a very reasonable and legitimate governmental measure. This policy does not in any way preclude nor prohibit any public hearing nor public appearance. The purpose of this proposed policy is to allow the board to best manage its docket and to conserve time. It is well stated in the mission statement here that the policy is likewise intended to provide optimum time for considerational comments and issues that are presented during the board meeting regarding any matter that's the subject of a public hearing. Basically, this policy further is an effort to best utilize our time and resources for any one meeting. It's just like we do in other matters throughout this board meeting in the city. One thing in particular with our citizen comments, we have a limit of three minutes. And the reason we do that over the years is because we want to manage our time and our resources so it will be open-ended. And this proposed policy follows in line with that to further advance this argument for this policy that even with our municipal court system, we have courts on Monday afternoon and Tuesday nights and Wednesdays and Thursdays. And the reason we do that is because we can't trial the cases, or they cannot trial the cases on any one date. And that, just like our circuit court is in the session now, no lawyer can just walk up and go in the courtroom and just argue his case at any time just because his case on the docket. We have a court administrator that is done so we can get before the court at the time that the court docket allows us to do that. It is very evident that we, as a governing body, can be more effective when we have adequate and sufficient time to consider, evaluate, and deliberate on the matters and issues. Over the past few meetings, you know, we have been here at the last meeting, we're here at least until 11:15 PM at the last meeting when we came out executive session. And that meeting was propelled by numerous public hearings and public appearances. And that's been the case throughout this term. So basically, a yea vote for this policy is not telling anybody that, no, you cannot appear before the board. A yea vote is not telling someone that you cannot make a public appearance. A yea vote is not telling someone that there will be zero public hearings. A yea vote is a vote to best manage our docket and so we can give the optimum consideration to those that appear before this board. And as the mission statement further states, such a policy designed not to overburden the process and allow thoughtful deliberation of all matters involving input from the public coming before the board of Alderman. One thing I do want to stress in policy is very well drafted, and I want to commend the drafter of this policy, and it allows for an exception. Whereas the intent is to not have more than two public hearings and two public appearances for any one meeting, but the exception specifically says unless it is determined through the office of the mayor that the public appearance request rises to the level of a matter that requires immediate attention, of course, then the submission will be placed on the next agenda. And also, the policy does not deny any board member from bringing a matter to the board that he or she deems to be of ultimate importance. So there's no denial of anyone to ever appear before our board. So I think that this policy is one that we should go ahead and approve. It definitely promotes our police powers, which is basically our, the welfare of our city. So I'm asking the board to go ahead and adopt this policy. And I think it is a very reasonable and legitimate governmental measure. And, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of this policy as it is written and contained in our packet as relates to public appearances and public hearings.
Alderman Perkins has moved approval of the modification of the public appearances policy and to add public hearings to the policy as presented to limit said agenda items per any one board meeting. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion, any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion, any discussion?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
You may.
Alderman Perkins, I just want to be clear about a document in the packet. I see the board policy for public appearances dated May 5, 2010. And then there's the reference to our previous ordinance about public hearings. That was just a reference, right? I mean, that doesn't change anything?
Ms. Prue, that's...
What has been done now and then how this is different and separate and distinct from that. Okay. Thank you.
Discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. I tell you, we did have division. Let's go on and take it by roll call. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sisdruck.
Yea.
Alderman Parker.
Yea.
Alderman Corey.
Yea.
Alderman Dumas.
Yea.
Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
And Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By measure, by a vote of six in favor, one against, and zero abstentions, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the registration and attendance of the board of Alderman, the city clerk, and the chief administrative officer to the Mississippi Municipal League Conference held in Biloxi, Mississippi from June 27th to July 1st, 2010. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, that's about the...
It is.
The only reason I pull that, because I just want to make sure that when we approve it, that we give the authority for any authorized per diem and travel to be issued in advance. And let me go ahead and make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the, I have written some on, but let me go ahead. I move the approval of the registration and attendance of the board of Alderman, the city clerk, and the chief administrative officer to the Mississippi Municipal League Conference held in Biloxi, Mississippi from June 27th, 2010 to July 2010, and that any authorized per diem and travel expenses, if any, shall be advanced to the authorized person that may be necessary and proper. The reason I put that in, Mr. Mayor, because it's always an issue in the payoffs and make sure we're in advance that this is consistent.
Okay. The motion is to approve the registration and attendance of the board of Alderman, the city clerk, the chief administrative officer, and the chief administrative officer to the Mississippi Municipal League Conference held in Biloxi, Mississippi from June 27th, 2010 to July 1st, 2010, and to authorize, or and that any authorized per diem and travel advance shall be distributed to the authorized person that is necessary and proper.
That's correct.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion?
I've got one.
Alderman Dumas?
Last year, sitting in the wards banquet, and there was some Hall of Fame recognition. I want to say you're coming up pretty, you're getting pretty close, aren't you?
I'm getting pretty close.
So it'd be good to see somebody representing Starkville at the Hall of Fame banquet.
I'm getting close.
Good.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Discussion? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one comment.
Okay.
Need a moment of education here.
Okay.
I made a mistake on not taking off item K, but since that's, well, since that's part of consent agenda, it's been adopted. Would we have to rescind the entire consent agenda, or can we rescind one item?
I think you can make a motion to rescind that item from the consent agenda.
Because I've just got one question about that.
Yeah. And two potential routes you could go is you could have the discussion and determine whether you would like it removed, or you can go ahead and remove it and have the discussion.
Well, let's do that. And this is just, and I've already asked Marquise about this, but I just had a question. There was $100 difference in the proposals when you look at, when you add them up per cut. And I know we've got the lowest and best opportunity, and I don't know anything about either one of these companies, but I was just wondering if there was not a best opportunity here by awarding this contract to a local firm instead of one from, or a local company instead of one from Uproar. That was, that was my only comment for the, for the discussion. I don't know if anybody else has the same.
Discussion from the board?
I don't know one from the other. I mean, I don't know if both are out of town or if both are local. I don't know either.
One of them is local.
Not enough there was a difference in proposals as far as quality of service or what they do, but...
Yeah, one of them has an MSU address. You've got Circle J from Uproar that had the lowest bid, and you have US Loans with a P.O. box at MSU. So I don't know.
To the best of my knowledge, US Loans is not a local company. They are a national brand, national, nationally recognized. And I think their closest office is Jackson, Mississippi. So I don't know if they're going to drive.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, because I know US Loans is a national company, but I, I had heard that there was a, and I saw a truck the other day. I was just asking. I didn't know anything about them. If this was a low, if in fact they had just opened a company here or not, but that was...
Mr. Griffith?
Alderman Dumas, I believe that US Loans is a franchise.
It is a franchise, yeah.
US Loans is a franchise, and they have locally known franchises around the country. That's my understanding.
So do we now have one in Starkville?
It's in the area, I believe.
We do, Matthew?
Yeah.
I do get high state service.
No, I don't.
High state service, Matthew.
I don't, it's new, newly, they follow into the franchise, the new service, so I don't know if they have a reputation.
Has this Circle J been doing? And I mean, we're happy with those?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Good. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, the next matter on the agenda is the request for approval for in-kind services from the city for drainage improvement work in the amount of $1,811. And this item is from the airport.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to approve in-kind services from the city for drainage work in the amount of $1,811.68 for the airport board. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And the next matter on the agenda is the request for approval for the fire department claims docket. You may. We'll give Alderman Carver a moment to exit the room.
Move approval.
Motion has been made to approve the City of Starkville Fire Department Claims Docket as of April 28th, 2010. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Sisdruck. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Do not.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. We'll give Alderman Carver a second to re-enter the room. The next matter on the agenda... All right, the next thing.
Electric department.
Okay. Next matter on the agenda is the request for authorization for the mayor to sign a TVA rate change agreement effective on October 1st, 2010. Mr. Hattaway?
Mayor and board, this, this agreement basically is what TVA is trying to do. They're trying to change their rates, and this, this agreement actually just changes the way that they calculate and build the different distributors within the Tennessee Valley. It is a revenue-neutral agreement, and it won't really take effect until October 1st of this year. And TVA is giving the, each distributor right now two options of how they want to do that. One is a nearly flat demand and energy rate, and the other is a nearly flat time of use rate. And as, like I say, right now, the TVA is giving the distributor the, the option of which one the distributor want to take. But in 2012, TVA will actually go to the nearly flat time of use rate. And that's, that's where they're headed to. And most of that is due strictly as to how TVA can curb its demand on the system.
All right. Alderman Perkins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I request this course of consent, and I... I request of this cons, consent agenda, I want to be sure, I have one question respectfully, Mr. Hattaway, thus, our granting the mayor authorization to sign this agreement in any way triggers a rate increase at any time based on your understanding of this document?
Can I answer that? We have, my name's Jeff Atwell, Atwell McGint. We have done analysis with these new wholesale rates, and we looked primarily at two things. One, how will it affect the retail rate payers? Number one concern. And it has no effect.
So you're, so you're clearly telling me and the rest of the members of the board and the public that if we vote in affirmative for this, that we're not saying that, we're in no way triggering a rate increase. There's nothing in this document that triggers or allows or promotes or enhances or propels rate increases.
That is correct. And let me qualify that by saying, we looked at three years' worth of load data to make a determination whether there, there was going to be any impact either on the rate payers or the electric department financially. And when we did that analysis, of course, each year is different depending on weather conditions. You know, if you have a hotter summer, revenues are up, and it, it impacts customers differently. In 2009, using that load data, it, it made a difference of about $4,000 in total revenue for the electric department. And to put that in perspective, the typical billings of the electric department are between $38 and $40 million. So they're negligible.
Right. Mr. Mayor, let me ask, appreciate your response, but since Mr. Hattaway is our department, I want him to answer that question too. So are you telling us that that in no way promotes or enhances or allows for any increase in electrical rates?
This document does not.
Okay. All right. Further discussion?
This, this is the type where peak hours, kilowatt-hours are charged at a higher rate versus lower, you know, non-peak hours, it's a lesser rate, so things equal out. Isn't that the type of variable rate we're talking about here? Okay.
Yes. And it's, it's very, very incremental right now. TVA is just, and I don't want to speak for TVA, but they're just trying to get the distributors moving in that mindset right now. Long-term, you know, I think that's where they're going.
Right.
And we're talking long-term.
This is going back to what the Obama administration is talking about, the smart grid, and this is part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? There is?
Well, I guess one, are we, City of Starville, I mean, we're capable of variable billing? I mean, we can...
Not at this time, no. We're going to have to grow into that.
But we'll be able to do this in October?
No.
2012.
This is strictly on the wholesale right now. We're talking the wholesale. Retail is further out.
Further out.
Yes.
Understand.
Further discussion? There is no motion pending.
I move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to authorize the mayor to sign the TVA rate change agreement effective on October 1, 2010. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you, board.
The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of a change order for drainage improve, oh, excuse me, that skipped one. The request for consideration of the approval of the low bid for the Reed Road widening project and authorization to enter into contractual agreement with contractor. The city engineer is with his wife, who is expected to go into labor at any moment now. So the chief administrative officer will be standing in this evening. And she is not an engineer, but works closely with... Alderman Vaughn.
I've got a question, Ms. Sproul. You might be able to answer for me.
I will. Be my best, Alderman.
I see you there saying, well, we're going to cut $10,000 to $15,000 to make some minor alteration. What is the old minor alteration going to be?
Now, see, you asked me something I don't know. What they were, what they were saying is my understanding, is that the $10,000 to $15,000 is negligible to the impact of the project. I don't know what the minor alterations are.
Just, if this is not coming out to $400,000 that were already allotted by the past board, it's not going to come out of that.
No, sir. What, what this is going to do is the budget went over. We underestimated the, the part of the project. The asphalt prices went up, the mobilization cost went up, and so we projected a certain amount that is, that is not in the budget. So we're, he's, Mr. Kemp is suggesting that there are some funds available in the Hospital Road project, that it, it has a contingency fund that appears to be available, and that there are some funds in the 2010 capital improvement projects, street improvement projects, that we'll be able to pull from there. So there are some ways that we can find some of those funds, hopefully, some of those other funds will come in, or the budgets will come in under with the contingency funds, and we won't impact those, and we'll be able to make that difference up on this Reed Road project.
We will not, we will not shortcut the plan.
No, sir. The plan remains the same. The only issue we've got right now is getting some right away from Karenton folks, and Attorney Latimer is working on that through their attorney. So hopefully, that will come to fruition shortly.
Ms. Sproul, let me just ask a friendly follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a follow-up to what Alderman Vaughn was saying, you know, the handout reflects that it will be a reduction of $10,000 to $15,000. That's just for FYI, but at the same time, if this motion is approved, it does not include a reduction of the project?
No, sir. It is intended as, as a cost savings that they found by, by changing some minor elements to it. It does not impact the project negatively at all. It will be the same project.
Right. And when you get that, just let us know what, what those matters are.
The details of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I will do that.
I move approval, Ms. Sproul. Mayor, I approve the consideration of approving the low bid for the Reed Road widening project and authorization to enter into the contract agreement with said contractor.
Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to approve the low bid for the Reed Road widening project and authorization to enter into contract, contractual agreement with said contractor. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. Next matter on the agenda is the approval of a request for a change order in the amount of $8,435 for Hollis 2. Discussion. Alderman Vaughn.
Ms. Sproul, on these Hollis, will this have an effect on, on the other projects right here when we move this far right here? Do you know?
No, sir. That should not impact those funds. This is, this, these are fairly minor adjustments reflecting the need to use a different type of seeding process that will better, better stay us. I think Mr. Kemp mentioned in his paperwork, the last time we seeded something, it got washed away. So this keeps us from having to go back and redo something if the weather, implement weather creates a problem for that project.
And the same thing applies to all three of these, three, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items numbers three, four, and five under the engineering streets portion of the agenda, items three, four, and five.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve items F3, or hold on, let me get the form over. Items 11F3, 11F4, 11F5. Did you include six?
No, we have a question about the dollar amount on that.
Okay. Items 11F3, item 11F4, and item 11F5 as presented. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of invoice from Ellis Construction in the amount of $25,800 for services rendered associated with the Old West Point Bridge project. Ms. Sproul?
And my error on this, I believe I probably was premature in making the entry. $25,800 is without the sales tax, so the correct amount is $26,703.
Mayor, that's what the question was about, so we're going to prove that one.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of invoice from Ellis Construction in the amount of $26,703 for the services rendered associated with the Old West Point Road Bridge project.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve of the invoice from Ellis Construction in the amount of $26,703 for the services rendered associated with the Old West Point Road Bridge project. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you, Mayor Vaughn.
Thank you, Ms. Sproul. And the next matter on the agenda is the request for approval to join the Golden Triangle Multijurisdictional Task Force. And you've already heard from the chief. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I move approval to join the Golden Triangle Multijurisdictional Task Force as outlined in our information previously presented to the board.
Alderman Sistruck has made a motion to approve the proposal to join the Golden Triangle Multijurisdictional Task Force as outlined in the packet presented. Is that your motion, Alderman Sistruck? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Sistruck, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval for the mayor to execute a construction contract with Stedham Construction for the sole qualified source of supply bidder to install a tie-in, oh, to install and tie-in a 24-inch force main to the wastewater plant. Mr. Devlin.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. As you recall, we're getting federal assistance with this project, and they have rather unique rules and regulations in the awarding of, of the work to contractors. We're allowed to use our source of supply bid schedules for this project, but despite the amount of the contract, they, they require that we, the contractor provide a performance and payment bond as part of the contract. So what we did is the, the two low source of supply bidders, for the provision of performance bond, were asked to go, they're underwriters, get quotes for providing those bonds, and one withdrew his interest in the project, the low bidder, and the, the second low bidder, Stedham Construction, provided a proposal with a performance bond. So what I'm asking tonight is approval for the mayor to execute a contract with Stedham Construction to install this, this force main.
Discussion.
Mayor, I move approval for the mayor to execute a construction contract with Stedham Construction, the sole qualified source of supply bidder in the amount of $29,757.50